I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Uh, my move that we adopt the agenda, I...
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there a chairman?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carry. Um, I want to approve the consent agenda. There was a town council minute, payment approval reports for July and August, and council finances before August.
And if we, uh, vote on the consent count, count, uh, excuse me, consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I couldn't even say something for you.
Is that the payment approval report for July?
I'm sorry, it's the payment approval report for August, and then the financial reports for July and August, rather than...
That's what we're approving, correct?
Right.
We just did. Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, public comment period. Uh, citizens may address the council on items on the agenda or not on the agenda. Out of respect to the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Do I have any public comment? Okay, through the none. Move on down to the department reports. We'll start with nine one one. Sports not here, we have reports in our folder. Fire. Demis is not here. Okay, finance?
Okay, uh, you've got the vast majority of the packet, I'm afraid, is me. Um, the July financial report is there. Um, my written report gives you bullet items of things that are important to sort of look at to make sure, um, that you don't see something and think it's horrible before you realize it's kind of normal doing business. Um, the financial report for August is also there. Um, two months into the fiscal year, we should be about sixteen and a half percent of budget if we're on track for our budget. So things are looking overall pretty well where we expected them to be at this point in time. Um, the one thing that's sort of a shocker that I did put on the list is that our first budget has already used up fifty four percent of its budget for the year. That is because of the pool lifeguards and taxes and repairs and maintenance and all of those things. Now that the pool is closed for the year, it will cease hemorrhaging money quite so quickly.
Is, is part of that the roof repair?
Yes. The roof repair was budgeted in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget, but just as a timing issue, it didn't get finished and then billed until July of twenty twenty-two. So we're gonna have to make up that extra twenty-five thousand dollars somewhere over the course of the year, but revenues thus far, I don't see that being a problem. Okay. Thank you.
Um, I'm like works. Um, I gave a little report there. Uh, we'll get Shannon a copy of that, too. Couple of other things. Uh, we have a couple of new employees. We, we have Dylan Still, just came on board a few weeks ago, and, uh, he's a young man, twenty-one years old, that, uh, just started with us, working out real good. Uh, we have six months under our belt with Troy Miller now. He's done very well, and he's taken over as our fleet manager. He's a, an excellent mechanic and, and very qualified. So we're allowing him to, to spend a little bit of money on tools and, uh, upgrade some of the stuff we have in the shop. Not a, a great deal, but he said he'd be more effective with a few more tools. So I've extended him a, a bit of a budget out of each of my departments to buy tools. And, uh, I think that's already paying off and repairs that we can do in-house rather than, than go out. He replaced Paul Wooden, who retired, and he took with him a, a big bundle of knowledge when he went. You know, fifteen years experience and also a, a great mechanic and welder and fabricator, so he'll be missed. Um, we have, we use about the same amount of water we did last month. Uh, the wells are still holding up very well. Uh, in fact, I checked well seven today, and the static level it's pumping from is up four feet from where it was last week. And, uh, it's higher than it was this time last year. Only thing I could really, but it's been running continuously the whole year. So the only thing I could really credit that to would be maybe the fact that some irrigation wells in the area have shut down for the season and allowing the natural water table to come back up. So, uh, it's, all of our wells are holding their own with the exception of well eight. Remember, I, I gave a little report, it had plugged perforations. We had a gentleman come down and shock the perforations with a really minor explosive charge. And, and we had climate pump come, put the pump back in, and it's still not performing up so far. So I called the gentleman back that, that did the exercise on it, and he said, "Well, sometimes you need to spend several hours, uh, serving the well, shutting it off, letting it recover, to develop it back to its potential." So we, we don't really need it that bad right now, but that'll be one of our things we do before we maybe get a well driller or somebody over here to take a look at it. But, so we haven't given up on that, but we haven't had time to, to mess with that, but we will. Um, street wise, we've been working with Ginger Castle a little bit. Uh, LCP got a grant for adding some apparatus, some benches and some, some garbage cans and some more planters for E Street. And, uh, we got some of the stuff down, the benches, we assembled down, put about three quarters of them out. Uh, we just, yesterday afternoon, received the last pallet of parts for the parklet, the controversial parklet. Uh, so we'll get that put together the first chance we get.
Do the benches have to be put away in the winter or can they stay out?
They stay out. They're, yeah, they're, they're bolted down.
Okay.
Uh, the parklet, I, is gonna be seasonal because there would be no way to plow around it and such, but... So we'll give that a try and see how it works out. Um, on streets also, Jay and I talked, and, and Ray and I have talked previously on the intersection of South Sixth and H. We still have some people driving a little bit fast through there. Uh, we painted up all the crosswalks and school zone signs in the, in the school neighborhoods, but we can go ahead and make that into a four-way stop. Uh, I sat down there for a little bit yesterday. People were running the stop sign going east and west.
I told you that, yeah, they do it all the time.
So it's, I mean, more people ran the stop sign than stopped at it. So it would be a great place for law enforcement to set and, and stop some people. And we could even put that in the newspaper, that law enforcement is going to start watching that intersection because, uh, it's, it was ridiculous.
Yeah, I sat there.
Some people didn't even touch the brakes. They just drove up there and looked both ways and shot it, so...
I watched them.
Yeah. So that, perfect. That needs to be taken care of. Geothermal, I reported last time I was at a meeting that we were having some issues with the DOC geothermal. And we got a gentleman from Final Falls, Brian Brown, from Brian Brown Engineering, came over and really pored over that entire system, not, not just our stuff, but he went up to Warner Creek and went through all their stuff as well. And said he doesn't think we have any huge major issues. Uh, he said that, uh, we had some, some gauges that were giving improper readings, so we're gonna have to pretty much replace all of our gauges. Probably not at a great expense, a couple thousand dollars for all the gauges inside. They were all off by, you know, as much as fifty percent, so a lot of...
Was it old? Getting old?
Well, they're twenty years old. That's how old to me, but...
Yeah. You're like one of those.
Yeah, I think that the water, both the, the circulated water between us and the water coming from the well are both, you know, on top, so probably shortens the lifespan on it. When we get all new gauges, we tore one of our filters there apart, and it's pretty, pretty plugged up, and we got it flowing much better than it was. And he says that that filter is gonna be inadequate no matter what we do. So he's gonna put together a design with a much larger capacity filter, something we can just blow off, clean itself, and go on about our waters and, and get rid of the, the sediment that's in it, so... Uh, we cleaned our, all of our heat exchangers two months ago, and while he was here, he was running some tests across the, for head losses through the exchangers, and it was pretty, pretty dramatic. So we're cleaning the heat exchangers again right now, uh, but, you know, we can't afford to change them, clean them every month. It would just be, you know, it takes three people fifteen hours to, to do all three heat exchangers, so we're gonna have to find some way to trap that dirt and keep it out of the heat exchangers, so... Um, we're looking forward to hearing from him. Uh, we're gonna, Michelle and I are gonna reach out to DOC when we get that final plan from him and, and some cost ideas, and hopefully we'll be doing some kind of a cost share with Warner Creek on it and the negotiation. Yeah. So, working on the geothermal, and, and it looks like something we'll be able to get them by winter, so that'll be great. The other geothermal system's working good. Uh, mentioned the, the LCP grant, the stop sign, well eight, new employees. About all I have, and I still have a question.
Thank you.
Okay, Michelle?
Uh... I think I'm gonna wait till I'm on to new business.
Okay. Move down to old business then. Um, EcoSolar pricing update?
Okay, um, when I was going over the contract with EcoSolar, um, based on the bid they gave us, um, it came to light that they had not budgeted for prevailing wage.
For what?
Prevailing wage.
Oh.
And since any project that this town takes on that's over fifty thousand dollars total has to be bid by prevailing wage. So EcoSolar, um, presented a new bid to us that, um, matched the number two bid that we had, um, in our packet from A and R. And then the contract in front of you, that is the, um, to be signed if you so choose, that has, um, the new bid that includes prevailing wage. So it takes it from a hundred and sixty-five to a hundred and eighty-five. But that's still a super good payback.
They're still the best company.
And they're still the best company.
Also, A and R, we still have reached out to A and R, asked them to resubmit that theirs was not a prevailing... There's, I think that their resubmit was also not prevailing wage, the third, the highest bid.
No, no, A and R was prevailing wage.
Oh, A and R was prevailing wage.
And so that was okay. The third bid that was fifty thousand dollars higher still, two hundred and twenty-five, was not prevailing wage.
Perfect.
And when I asked them to reach out and rebid, they backpedaled on, well, they don't know why that we were able to do it so much cheaper, they've never been underbid before, and they've never had to do prevailing wage before, and blah da 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 da, and did not provide another bid.
So you guys only have two bids that are actually allowable to accept, state law?
How much did you say that was for Eco?
Hundred and eighty-five.
Okay.
And if you look at, in your packet is the actual contract, it's two thousand dollars upfront for them to do the negotiation with PPNL and get all the planning and permits and everything in place, ready to go. And then, once they get that ready to go and they've gotten all the approvals that this is going to happen, and we're gonna get the Energy Trust Grant and the other things that go with it, then it's fifty percent down, which is ninety-one thousand, and they can't finish the work within thirty days of getting the product. So not wood on the supply chain, we can still have this done by spring.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, doesn't the roof have to be replaced before this is done?
No. It, it don't. I think that what is wrong with the roof is that the membrane just didn't come all the way to the end, and so we'll take care of that while we're doing the roof.
Okay.
It should not be expensive at all because it's not a lot. But, um, if there's further damage, but I don't think that there is, then we'll be able to get that information and then get up on top of the roof and start putting panels up.
Okay. Does Shannon have any questions?
Anybody have any questions on that?
No, the one thing I would say is that roof, I know it's leaking in that big complex or at least it has. I'm not sure which side of the roof that is on, but we definitely need to make sure that's taken care of before, uh, we put two hundred thousand dollars of panel on top of it. Uh, I'll give a three-four. Thanks, Joe.
You bet.
Okay. Move on down to resolution eleven twenty. Warden bid to EcoSolar Incorporated?
They are actually, uh, sorry, EcoSolar is, EcoSolar Inc. is actually the real corporation. They, EcoSolar and Electric is a, is a new business name, so that's why it's...
I'm gonna read that till you interrupt me.
Yeah.
And also, uh, yeah, EcoSolar and Electric and authorizing mayor to execute contract. So, I need a motion on that?
Any further discussion?
That's, that's like a five-year payback, isn't it? Don't we get our money back in a little higher six years?
It's about seven and a half.
Seven and a half, eight.
And then, um...
It's still pretty good.
It's still pretty good, and the panels are guaranteed for twenty-five years. And there are some of this style that are in existence that are more than thirty years old and still operating very efficiently.
Mm-hmm.
So this is...
Good deal.
This is a huge payback in a fairly short period of time. You might not all still be on the council, but it's gonna be really close.
Uh, and I move that we vote on resolution number eleven twenty. A re- a resolution awarding bid to EcoSolar and Corp, Inc., um, PPA, EcoSolar and Electric and authorizing mayor to execute contracts, sorry.
Do I, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
All seconded.
Any motion made in second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, okay. Motion carry. Uh, next is the purchase of Ruckus Park for one hundred thousand, anticipated forty-five day closing September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Shall you, uh...
Um, we received the, uh, preliminary title report, which, uh, I'm signing when we gave our earnest money, and it's moving right along. So the feedback to the committee has been very positive, that the town is purchased out, who's the judge?
I've heard a lot of people want to go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. I have heard a lot of other people say that they let, let the town keep it and keep it.
Okay, do I have a motion on that?
We don't need a motion. That was just information that would let me know where that purchase is in the, the private ledger.
All right, look, I'm, I'm supporting, uh, Red Rock B O D agreement.
Uh, Jeremy and I met with, uh, Jeff Manorak and Mary Dean Din, and, um, one person from their legal team. We are, uh, sending back a draft to them with changes that they've suggested and changes that we've wanted, um, and we're getting closer to that being agreed upon. And it's a, uh, it's favorable for the town and is protecting the interests of the town. So that's moving right along.
Have they continued to make arrangements on that?
Yes, they have. In- interesting fact, we've been working with, uh, what is her name?
Evie.
Evie with their accounts payable. She's been very responsive in getting things back to us. Um, and we literally sent her, uh, updated information on, uh...
Friday afternoon.
Monday afternoon on a couple of different things that we were trying to get her information for. As soon as we sent it, we got email back saying that she's no longer with Red Rock and that somebody else would be taking over the account. So I don't know if they're transitioning out their leadership team, if they're cleaning or if they're getting more lean on who... Their workforce, I, I don't know, but, uh, it was interesting. So, but the BOD is getting closer to the finish line. But they, and they have been responsive in getting us our money.
So, um, since I missed this all in the beginning of when you were revamping this down, can you bring up the date on what exactly we're doing with it, or asking for?
Um, we're asking for the Red Rock to be cognizant of the water that needs to be supplied to both the town and to Red Rock, and that if there is a decision to be made, that Lakeview would get first and then Red Rock, mainly is what we're doing. Um, and then if there's, uh, problems or breakdowns, that Red Rock would be, uh, responsible for repairing instead of the town. Um, I'm trying to think of... And, and that it's just more of an equitable relationship where we have insurance, they have insurance, we're just marking that now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Move on, move, this doesn't count from you, from six back to four or five.
I, I put that on there to see what time you guys wanna have council. You want it at four, you want it at five, you want it at six, doesn't matter. Just choose.
Well, we try it later, and I don't think there's any more people here, so you wanna go back to four or five?
No, that's fine with me, but I'm flexible, so I'd like to know what Shannon is...
Four is a little agree for me, five or six would be fine.
Five, five o'clock?
Five o'clock?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. Move to five o'clock.
Okay.
Quick question. Would this be effective as of the next council meeting?
Uh, yeah, I'll start the next fire, next council meeting.
You need to make a motion?
Yeah, come on, call for that.
Okay.
I need a motion on, uh, moving our meeting time from six to five.
I'll make a motion to move it from six to five. Turn forward.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made in second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Holly, utility report.
Oh. My nightmare, Evie. Okay, so when I first started working here, um, utility debt was at four hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five, eighty-four. And that was just until January thirty-first. In April, I started doing shut-off notices, and the majority of that that I collected was almost sixty thousand dollars. It's fifty-nine. So our debt now has went down a hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and eight cents. Can you repeat that again? One hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-four and eight cents.
Wow.
Good job.
Yeah.
Way to go. Excellent work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then I'm finding that some of these houses that we're still billing on sewer, I cannot turn them over to collections because we're still billing. So, or about eighty-plus thousand in the hole for sewer bills.
Because General Oil collects them, what?
Because we're still, they're still getting, um, service because we can't shut sewer off.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so we can't, so my next step is filing small claims against them because we can still file even though they are still receiving service. So, but that debt is still close to eighty thousand, right? That's my next big job to work on, to get those out and get that debt down.
It, it's really been a remarkable process, uh, I mean, just hunting people down. And the, the, the change of ownership is a big task in and of itself, but to whittle down the debt is impressive. You're the awesome help. Thank you.
Okay, Holly, good job.
Thank you. All right, well, you guys, I'll enjoy your evening, Lucy.
Bye, Holly. I told you.
Bye.
Dog ordinance date seventy-four. I don't have that. I put it in your... Did none of you guys get that in your agenda?
No, I didn't do that. In my backpack. This is a new dog ordinance, uh, and it mirrors more of, uh, it, it has more of a quote-unquote bite to it, um, and it mirrors the county. The nurse had a little bit more of an aggressive bite to it, so, um, it allows us to be, I don't wanna say aggressive, but more proactive in, um, having barking dogs taken care of instead of getting sound bites. Um, that, i- it's just outrageous. So we're able to go in and handle that at a more proactive rate, so that's what that is.
Through the sheriff's department or in Dallas?
It's in the house.
You're gonna do it?
No, I'm not gonna do that.
Who's gonna do that?
Well, I'll do that for a while, but then we need to, we need to do that. We need to do that, and we need to talk about somebody for, uh, in-town nuisance. Because they're two really big problems that we have.
You guys got it? Your ordinance is in the packet.
It's done in your packet, Shannon?
Nope, I have the one that doesn't help.
Okay, uh, um, I'd like to, I just wanted to make a motion that we table that until our next meeting, so we all have a chance to read this.
Okay, I'll get everybody a copy.
Thanks for that.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, let's move on down. Town council vacant seat to be filled. Um, each one of you had a copy of both applicants, so I need a motion on which one. Which one are you gonna hold for in a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, have Charlie Tracy on town council.
Okay.
I'll second that.
What was that, Shannon?
You seconded it.
You seconded it? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Dave?
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, that's where our end, next meeting. Uh, Lakeview Booster Club membership sponsorship, what level would the town like to be sponsoring?
Um, I'd like to start in. I, I don't know why the town wants to get involved with a booster club. I mean, I think we all support the booster club in certain ways. Booster Club. I mean, I think we all support the Booster Club in certain ways, but I don't know if the town wants to get involved in that.
I don't think we've ever sponsored.
Never gotten involved with Booster Club, no.
Well, with any Booster Club or other things for sports, at the school.
We we didn't have, we're gonna open ourselves up to a whole much different place considering what's sponsoring.
I I agree with you, yeah, we've had that discussion in the past, but um, I do not think we should uh make a donation there.
Okay. Move on down, Hunkers Sports Sponsorship. Uh, September twenty-one through April twenty-one, promoted spots to keep the community updated on town projects. Michelle, you wanna come up?
I do. So, they're having a promotional um spots for us to, and I felt like it was a really good opportunity for us to keep the town abreast of what projects are coming, because we've got the water treatment facility coming online. And I think the community needs to know where we are in that process. Um, and any of the other uh tasks that the town is doing, we can um put that into a thirty-second clip. I also thought it would be a nice idea if we rotated voices. So, uh one month we could have the mayor come on, one month we could have Fanny and Jay and me and Shelley, so that that people can hear a different tone, a voice fluctuation coming through the radio, and it would be something new than just having Marcy do it. Um, if you guys don't wanna do it, then I'll just rotate staff.
No, go on.
Pretty fun. So, you know, go honkers, we're getting clean water. I don't know what it is, but I.
So, this is just during the basketball and the sports season at the school?
Yeah, so it's. Right, so it's here until April, what was the date, April?
Yeah, April twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah, April twentieth, December.
Yeah, so I'll come up with some scripts that you guys, I'll just tell you, you guys, you can just go read it, and I think it'd be fun to interact with the community.
Okay.
But if you don't wanna do that, we'll just have Jeff and Marcy.
I think it'll be fun.
Well, I've been asked, I've been asked to speak at the Rotary and stuff like that, and I've just hesitated, because I don't wanna get it wrong. But if you come up with something, the script, you know, I just don't wanna.
So, is this free, or do we pay for this?
We pay for the spots, I guess, um to support uh the honker act, activities. Right, um but I did it because we have a lot going on. And sometimes people just, we need different avenues to communicate to them. So, only are we gonna start doing uh some stuff going through the paper, online, um with uh the radio station, so I thought it would be nice.
That's pretty.
Yes.
Good, doing the neg- negative.
No, that's just, I just need to let you know that you're gonna be talking about.
Don't, don't, don't leave Jeff out of this.
And you're a sandwich board.
Yeah, Shannon's gonna be doing it too.
I don't think we're supposed to have sandwich.
I'm fine, I've got a great face for radio.
That's funny.
Okay.
Sorry.
Let's move on down, the urban renewal boundary introduction and timeline to council adoption of annexation of community.
Yes, so um.
So, Lakeview and East Highway one forty, the Lake County, Buller Terrace, one hundred acres of Buller Canyon.
So, uh this is a a co-project that we are doing with LCP. And right now, uh LCP has going their downtown businesses and their URA. And I have up on the screen the proposed draft map. This is not a final. Um, this is just getting us to a feasibility study of what income is gonna come from the URA, um and how it all works out. So, this is more than likely gonna change. Um, the, and Shannon, if you don't, I I'll have to send you a map of this, um unless you're online, um. But the green part. Okay, um the green part is what LCP is proposing. The blue is what the town is proposing. However, it all works for the town. So, even though they're different colors, we can label it as uh the north part of town, URA. We can order, you know, the second part as part two, and then part three would be the south end of town. Um, and I've put in the Buller Canyon, because I needed the extra land to make this work. Um, with the URA, you're only allowed to do twenty-five percent of the total acres that the town has. Which is why I had to throw in that huge blue spot that's going up to the canyon, that's a hundred acres. Um, I don't believe that we're in a situation that we are able to uh develop that area right now. But I had to get the acres. So, what this does is this, um for however long we decide, and it all has to pass through council, we'll need to set up an advisory committee where all of the URA money comes through that advisory committee. So, property tax, right now there's a percentage that goes to the county, a percentage that comes to the town, a percentage that goes to the hospital, to the library, and I think there's one more.
School.
The school. That doesn't change. But when the URA goes in, any development in those boundaries, any improvements on that property, that assessed value, property tax, a hundred percent of that comes to the town. For example, if we put, if someone, a developer comes in and puts a house on a vacant piece of property, and the town's tax for that piece of property is eight hundred dollars, as it is now. That would still occur. If the house is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it's a vacant piece of land, then the assessed improved value, five thousand dollars, would come to the town. And then that money can be used for capital improvements, for horizontal infrastructure, to um improve streets, to improve site, it it would all depend on what the advisory committee sets forth as a goal for the URA money.
Now move. If LCP has that whole green section, would the town lose money on that?
No, no, all of it comes to the town. I.
They're just, they're just doing a separate grant to get that, I think.
Right.
So, that's what I said about working together. It's it's a benefit.
Right, so what I think we need to do as the town, like I said, is we need to define, what is our downtown area? Like, is this downtown area all the green? If it is, what is it the town, what does the town want? And how does it want it developed within that area? Is there certain criteria that needs to be met? Are there certain and is that what you want?
Like people take care of their own storefronts and.
Right.
That kind of stuff.
So, in particular, with the downtown area and these historic buildings, how do we want a developer or a building owner to improve those those pieces of property, and how potentially could the URA help them with that? So, do we want onings on everything? Do we not want onings? Do we want to make sure that if we do require onings, that that business owner knows that there's gonna be a life cycle and a cost to keeping that up? Um, so those are type of things I think that the town, we should probably have a work session on what the town really wants this to look like, in particular with our downtown area. For our residential area, of course, there'll be, you know, you'd have to be current codes, current and um additional electrical work, plumbing work, no asbestos. They'd be built to current codes. Within the URA, because there is an additional amount of property tax, we can incentivize developers. I'm not sure exactly how that's gonna work, because we haven't got that far into the plan. But we will be able to incentivize a rehab person, we'll be able to incentivize a brand-new home builder, and we'll be able to incentivize a planned unit developer that could come in and do a hundred houses, for example.
Start with five.
Okay, we'll start with five.
Good.
Um, I'm really excited about this. Because um John Day has done this, they made their URA in two thousand eighteen. The two decades prior to John Day adopting their URA, they had a total of four houses built in twenty years. They adopted their URA, and they are current, their first year they had fourteen new homes come out of the ground and eight multifamily ones. And they just approved through their town council a hundred and fifteen homes to go in. Um, they improved their property tax income by a million two dollars just from the URA. That doesn't count, um increases in water, uh sewer, travel tourism. That's just with property tax improvements. So, the reason why I I wanna open this to you right now is I really think this is what we need to self-reliant and start to grow our city. We have lost population, and we, bringing new houses to rural Oregon is a really tough match to crack. And I think we've got part of the formula here that's working. So, what's the timeline look like? So, I'm hoping to have a consulting company as well as um having the maps committee prepared and the feasibility study prepared for you to come to council by November.
Michelle, something else you need to know about council, though. Without something like the URA, if you guys wanted to raise like a property tax, like let's say you guys wanted a nine-one-one levy. There, right now, any property tax, any special property taxing that you do, like let's say for nine-one-one or whatever, because of property tax compression, you would take general fund dollars away, because the values, so this is one of the few methods that's still allowed out there to go above those um property tax limitations that were passed in the late nineties, early two thousands. Major five and some of the other ones. So, this that's another thing is, right now, you guys, right now, where taxes are and why the town hasn't, why the town focused things like fees and other stuff like that, you're banned off, because if you start, if you pass a tax levy to a certain area for certain things for property taxes, you're basically robbing unlimited general fund dollars for that particular area for what you're doing. So, that's the other benefit of this particular, from a legal standpoint.
Yeah, it's, it it's, it's a formula, it's working, they're having great success. John Day's population has increased by one percent, and I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but it is absolutely.
Oh, you better go on down.
It's monumental. Um, and I I I think this is a good way for us to rely on us to do what we need to do to bring new houses that are affordable to the town. Um, my goal is to stay within a a price range for our workforce. Um, and to talk to the developers who are coming, because I don't want the the citizens of Lakeview spending forty percent or more of their income for rent or for a mortgage. That's tough on families, especially young families who are are in the middle of raising children. It's tough on our senior citizens who have immediate income. Um, but it's gonna bring people who want to help us develop new housing, new places for people to live, to upgrade, um where we can do it by ourselves. So, I will, I'll send this out to Shannon, I um I'll get these out to you. Um, so you can see uh the map and the presentation. Um, but I wanted to open this up. If if it's something that the the council doesn't feel is a good idea, then now would be the time to tell me to stop. Before I get down the rabbit hole too far, um.
Hey, Michelle, another example of what you've done locally is that have you guys, how many of you guys have been down to where the railroad, what the train station is, a lot of that warehouse, that old warehouse district in Climb Falls? Some of this was done in URA to promote redevelopment, a bunch of those abandoned warehouses that were downtown Clambers were done under a similar process, so, because they just didn't have any use for that, like I said, companies went out of business twenty years ago, you know, where ship manufacturing shifted, etc., so it's been done other places. But that would be a sample of an area, and the only reason I'm aware is because of, it was brought up at one of the attorney's conferences to leave cities, but it's, that's another area, and they have reports, you go on their website, they have URA reports that they've done annually for several years, where they tend to clear an area, blighted, and then they approve it. So, again, it's fully a council decision, but if you guys are interested in some of the things I can do, it's, it is a allowable technique to use to try to do some things, to get past some of the um property tax limitations. Because right now, for example, they can only raise the, where you get hamster lasso is valuation of property. You're only allowed to increase the value a certain percent per year, even if the property's, you know, property goes up to, you know, from a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand, there's limitations that say, okay, we can't assess the tax value except this hard limit every year. This is a mechanism I don't know.
My feeling is we should proceed with, you know, at least as part of an introduction and planning and see where it goes, and probably all the wanna do, deal with it um down down the line.
Okay, I'll do it. That's the wish.
I agree.
I agree.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Then I'll proceed. Full bore ahead. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on down, small cities meeting with LOC with September tenth, thought it was a great meeting.
It was, it was a good one, huh?
They are wanting a, wanting, looking for a host for, on December third to hold another one. And Michelle and I talked, and I think we could host it again, and hopefully it'll be in person. And get more cities involved.
Does that work for everybody, for us to host it again? Shannon?
Ma'am.
Yeah, I'll give it back.
Okay.
Okay, move on down, past utility collections, she went through that. But she went from a thirty-one page to a seventeen-page report. So, that's great. Alright, Michelle, reorganizing town hall, public works, fire, nine-one-one.
Yes, so I'm working on a reorp chart. I was gonna put it up on the screen, but I'm still working through some of the reorganization over at Fire and nine-one-one. Um, but I think we're getting to a place with them that I'll be able to present it completely to you next, next time it flows better, it gives the. It gives the council a better view of how things operate and who's, uh, who is reporting who.
Just a flow chart?
Yeah.
Where are their names and then who's doing what?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yes.
Okay. RFP for water chemi plant.
That's coming this week. I've been working with, uh, Jeremy out of, uh, a law firm out of Bend to put that together for us. And I'm hopeful that I can get that this week. I know I've been saying it for many weeks now, but everything's busy and overflowed, so we'll get that this week. As soon as it comes out, I'll send it to everybody.
Okay, and the RFP for the Kitty Park, Donald Park.
Yep, they're working on that as well.
And Kitty Bowlin.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Informational, National and Development for the Humanities, Advancing a New Multidisciplinary Dark Sky Study. Undergraduate minor at Southern Oregon University in Defense and Area Rural Study, two hundred and fifty thousand awarded. And now it's on April, it's on two.
So I submitted a grant through the Humanities to create in, uh, over at Southern Oregon University, a minor study of dark sky. Um, there is already one in the nation at University of Utah. And so I got hold of all those people and asked for their, uh, paperwork so I could just kind of paste it into the grant. Um, and part of their grant was that they developed a dark sky drone with their uh, computer technical department that is made specifically for dark sky viewing and tracking. So, um, that's been submitted, I thought, but you know.
Cool.
Yeah, there's a lot of people interested in that if you get it out from Oregon and Washington, California, that would come here for that.
And Big Push is the best spot.
Yeah, well, even up the canyon.
Yeah.
It's good.
There was a couple-
We live in the largest block of dark sky in the world.
Yeah.
I think, wasn't the chamber working on that a couple of years ago?
They were, you know, the ball got dropped.
Yeah. I did go over-
It's cool, I'm glad, Ray, I'm so proud of you.
And, and I did go talk to Barry Schulbergger to make sure that he would be okay with we submit, uh, submitting on behalf of the chamber and, and the commissioners. And he said that he was fine with that. So I did ask permission before I went, you know, um, drilled down. He said that'd be great, so.
Okay. Uh, let's move on down, letter regarding speeding on South Third. I'll read, I'll read the letter. So over the past eleven years, my wife, Patty and I have watched people speed up and down South Third Street like it's a racetrack. And for eight of those years, we've asked for speed zone signs to be put up and have had no luck. Please before someone's child gets killed, put speed zone signs up so people traveling either direction between Roberta and F Street on South Third can see that they're in a residential area since the houses don't seem to get their attention. Uh, I believe there is a speed zone sign up, isn't there, Jeff?
There is, and, and I talked with Jeff, uh, a couple of times. I, I didn't know he'd been trying to do it for eight years, but I've talked with him for like six months. And I'm not sure if we can put a twenty mile an hour zone there unless it's during school hours when children are present. So then, I think it's gonna be twenty mile an hour, the sign would have to say when children are present. Or we can go just with residential, which is twenty-five mile an hour, I'm not sure. And schools on the signs are fluorescent green and residential signs are black and white, just a speed marking. So I'm not really-
There's, there's one sign that says twenty when children are present. And the, the problem also, I think, is people coming from Roberta Avenue because they don't realize, which is the county's, perhaps, knowing, that that is a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, even though around, or super bonds, it's forty-five.
There's, there's some out there, there's some out there also on, on Third Street, it's at twenty-five.
I've seen them going in both directions.
Well, yes, they do. They take that speed.
So we, we can put some more signs up surely, but I, I'm unsure which ones to put up.
Is that a planning question or?
I'm not sure. I, I, while we're on the subject, I wanted to mention that the mayor and Sandra and myself interviewed someone as a special project director. We're the only person that, uh, applied for the job. And we offered the job to Scott Langham and I haven't heard back for certain if he's accepted the position, but we interviewed him, we're very impressed with his interview and, and at that point offered him the job, so. Uh, I think that would be an excellent question for him to pursue. And I, I think there's a lot of knowledge in that area. He won't be starting for a bit, till the eleventh of next month. Well, I can be his first job. I, I guess it's an engineering question. I'm not sure.
You know what, why don't I ask, uh, Jay Harlan, our planning person, and, and ask him the direction to go?
Sure.
And then I'll let you guys, and I'll, I'll report back.
And is it a, is it a, um, a legal issue or?
Or maybe an ORS?
It's, it, you basically know either direction on this one. Residential speeds are set at twenty-five in Lakeview. However, you have to write, if it's a school issue, to go, so it's really, I think, gonna be your option.
And how far from the school can you have it?
That's, that would be the, that would be the question, so.
I think you can do a resolution for this if I read it correctly before. Because I looked up information to change E Street to fifteen miles an hour because it's a one-way street and people are going thirty, forty down it. And when I read, you have to do it, um, uh, fifty to a hundred feet or something like that before the zone changes, the speed zone.
About twenty-five speeding tickets would go along the way.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, I have, I, I don't see a lot of police driving around.
Well, we could, I'm sure, take one of the, um, old vehicles down there and just park it.
Oh, that would-
Take a radar, take a radar gun down there.
People only speed, slow down once, then they realize what's going on.
Hey, does council have anything to add?
I've got one thing. Um, as you're aware, Mike Leslie
Uh-huh.
Uh, got mauled by a deer over at the Seraphimus Park, um, broke his collarbone. Um, and I work at school and right up and down there, there's deer all over the place. And I, I, I'm really thinking one of these days, some kid's gonna get a bat. So we still kind of have to keep, I know, uh, last year, we talked, or you guys, before I was here, talked about getting rid of some of the deer. See, they're, they've been here for six, seven years and they're born here, so that's why they come back, you know, but at some point in time, we need to think about
I've tried.
The deer popularity.
Yeah, I've tried, I've talked to a bloated case.
I know.
Yeah, I've talked to Trevor in Clamton.
Oh.
He was in the, in charge of Clamton and Lake.
They've broke his collarbone.
Yes. I haven't told him that, but I will.
Okay.
I haven't scored.
So anyway.
Hey?
Haven't heard that one.
Yeah. That's okay. No, Mike Leslie is a, uh, Sandy teaches school, uh, she just retired. He's a, uh, treasurer at the Alps Club. And he's a, he's a hunter.
Yeah.
So he knows to stay away from deer, but he couldn't do that.
My hen's dog winning.
Yeah, so anyway.
Well, they, they, um, another lady just lost her pub from getting stomped to death just recently, just in warfare.
And see, the rut's gonna happen in about a month. It's gonna get worse. Well, I know, but it's gonna get worse.
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna get worse. So I'm just throwing that out there.
By far the most deer I've ever seen in town.
Yeah.
There's wander around the streets broad daylight there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a problem.
It all started when they put the solar farm in south of town and pushed them out of the sinkbrush down there.
That might have been. I never thought about that.
I've seen-
Good point, Shannon.
Water.
Yeah.
Yeah, and water.
And people feeding them now.
Right.
But we can't do anything about that. We tried.
Well, they broke my water fountain, that's not good.
Okay, if there are none, then we'll adjourn the meeting until that's-
Actually, I, you know, one thing, Greg?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Greg Baker passed away and he was a, uh, police officer for the town of Lakeview for a number of years and wanted for something
Yes.
He can do it, bring it to night.
I actually pulled his file. And I have more stuff so that the family can also have his file, his personal file.
So. Just recognizing his service with the town, he was
Oh, yeah.
He was with the, with the years, so.
Maybe we can get a nice letter with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I work for him a lot.
Okay, then we'll adjourn the meeting until my father gives my best line.